Would you call the roll, please?
Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to say a public apology for some of the comments I made, I guess, at the last meeting, especially to Robert and to Mark. I may have been a little terse. My brother said, "You spoke to them like you speak to me, and you shouldn't do that." So, anyway, for that, I apologize. I broke my own rule. Don't argue with council members. It doesn't look good. So, anyway, for that, I'm sorry.
Appreciate it.
Item number two is the consent doc. Oh, wait, we have a proclamation, sorry. It says, "Whereas Oklahoma is ranked 17th nationally for the number of women killed by men in homicide incidents, and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's dignity and humility through the use of emotional, physical, sexual, and economic power and control, and whereas the impact of domestic violence is not confined to any demographic, including race, age, influence, education, religion, or sexual orientation, and whereas domestic violence negatively affects the quality of life for an individual and the economic well-being of our city, and whereas Verizon Wireless uses documentary "Telling Amy's Story" to help raise awareness and add victims to domestic violence, and whereas an increase in community awareness of domestic violence and the appropriate response and referral to licensed service providers would lessen the number of domestic violence fatalities, and therefore be it resolved that I, Glenn Lewis, Mayor of the City of Moore, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2013 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Moore and urge all citizens of Moore to be aware of the impact that domestic violence can have in our community and in communities across the nation." You're gonna accept this? Thank you very much. Sure.
I'm Meredith Tucker. I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless and I'm a resident of Moore. And Oklahoma, we just got the new statistics, and Oklahoma is now the third in the nation for a number of women murdered by men in single victim incidents. So, that jumped from 17 in the nation last year to third, which is not okay. So, to highlight this issue, we're hosting a free, open-to-the-public screening of "Telling Amy's Story" tomorrow night at Hillsdale Free Will Baptist Church at 7:00 PM. It's a documentary about a woman who was killed by her husband as she was trying to leave an abusive relationship. So, this documentary is really important for people because it shows the signs of domestic violence relationships and how you can recognize them in your neighbors and your coworkers and your employees and really refer them to the right agency. So, again, "Telling Amy's Story" is free, open to the public tomorrow at 7:00 to 9:00 PM. KFAR meteorologist Emily Sutton will be there moderating it, and there will be a panel afterwards discussing it as well. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Item two is the consent document. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held September 16, 2013. Item B is receive the minutes of the planning commission meeting held August 13, 2013. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2013-2014 in the amount of $9,144,561.16.
Move to approve?
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number three is receive a report from Select Actuarial Services and accept the annual actuarial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2013. Carry.
Mayor and council members, Laura Sprouse with Select Actuarial Services is here tonight to present the annual report summary and answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening. Tonight, we'll just go over the highlights of the actuarial study and be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Our engagement with the city, the purpose of our engagement is to provide you with an evaluation of your liabilities at fiscal year end, June 30 of 2013. This is a governmental accounting standards requirement that you recognize your total liability for workers' compensation and your general liability exposure and your retained health benefits. So, that's one of the objectives of our study. The second objective is to provide you with a forecast of budget for the upcoming, the current fiscal year and the upcoming fiscal year. The total reserves as of June 30 of 2013 are shown in a graph on Slide 4 and in the table on Page 5. The total reserve is $1,866,000. That's broken down into about $436,000 for healthcare, $1,260 for workers' comp, $130,000 for the liability, and there's an additional tort claim that we do not provide an estimate of, but it's on your books for $40,000. So, that makes up the total, the $1,866. This total reserve is actually a reduction over 12 months ago, the end of fiscal year 12. The reserves were $2,113,000. The decreases were in just about every line, healthcare, workers' comp liability. The reserves are down for all of those pieces, and we'll see that the city's experienced some stability and experience this year, which has been good. So, Pages 6 and 7 just highlight some of the changes since last year. Healthcare claims from 12, from the fiscal year 1213, they'll continue to be paid out over the next 12 to 24 months, but they're coming in very close or right under what we expected. So, we've revised our estimate for that year down just a little, and the 1112 year also ended good, just slightly below what we had expected. So, we've made a couple of reductions there. Workers' compensation overall, most years were showing improvement. The 2013 year is maybe slightly higher than what we would expect at this time. It's a very new year. So, but any, any of the increased experience in that year is more than offset by improvement on older years so that in total, we've come down on our estimates of ultimate losses. Again, liability, the reserves have actually come down, but there were two settlements that happened during this past year that were made and already paid out. So, there was no effect on the reserves, but because these were unexpected, there was an increase in the ultimate cost of claims. So, that's just a breakdown of the reserves as of June 30 of 2013. Now, the beginning on Slide 8 is the forecast, the budget for the 1314 year. The total budget for health, workers' comp, and liability that we've prepared is $4,949,000. Most of this is for healthcare, $4,265,000 for the cost of claims below the stop loss. The workers' comp is $588,000, liability $96,000. The next few slides just show the changes since last year. Healthcare, we've kind of looked at a rate per employee. This rate in our calculations is down, so that's a good thing. It's improved experience over the last couple of years, and you have a few more employees than what we had figured last year, but still the total forecast, the current of $4,265 is below what we projected last year. Going forward, we add some inflation and a few more employees, and we get to $4,487 for the fiscal year 15. Workers' comp, the cost for $1,000 of payroll, we have kept that. Our estimate of that is unchanged from last year, so again, a very stable situation. Payroll slightly below the estimates that we used last year. So, the costs are just slightly under what we projected last year for fiscal year 14. And then again, with some inflation, we've projected fiscal year 15 at $633,000. The liability costs, again, the rate is up slightly, but the total forecast is $96,000 for liability claims. So, that's not a very big piece of the total. There's a summary of the numbers on Page 12. Again, just to recap, the liability as of the end of the fiscal year is $1,866, and then there's your budget numbers for the upcoming years. So, if I haven't put you to sleep, maybe if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
How does a tornado figure into this when workers' comp and on liability?
It really has not figured in as far as causing more claims. Workers' comp, of course, would apply to any workers who might have been injured during the tornadoes or the course of their work and maybe cleaning up. We did not see an increase in claims due to that. Liability, of course, is a third-party type coverage that was not really impacted by that. So, your property, which is not part of the scope of what we do, that, of course, was the biggest impact there.
But workers' comp claims during the tornado actually went down. That's kind of unusual, isn't it? Considering the amount of debris that was out there.
Right. But we did not see, I looked for that when the data came in, and I didn't see any.
Thank you.
Does this report, I'm sorry, does this report draw any conclusions, or does it just report the expenditures and the costs? Does it draw any conclusions as to why certain expenses may be more and certain may be less?
We don't get into very deep detail as far as the nature of the claims. We do tend to look at bigger picture things like the number of claims or the average size of claims, but we're not getting down to saying the cause of this is back injuries or this event or that type of thing. It's not part of what we, what we do.
What is our experience modification factor, do you know?
Well, we don't actually have, have one that they actually publish, I don't think, because we're self-insured.
Oh, okay.
And we just have access, they have a, they'll have what a manual rate might be. So, and this, this would be all of our numbers, whereas too many expenditures happen, we're going to have to pay the workers' comp that we could fully insure, we'd spend probably $900,000, maybe a little bit more. By being self-funded, we're probably saving, I'm just estimating, $300,000 or $400,000 per year.
You have a question?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Do we need to vote on this?
I'll make a motion to receive this report.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number four is consider approval of an agreement with Vireo Incorporated for design of the Veterans Memorial Park Wall of Honor in the amount of $15,000 plus $1,500 per person per site visit.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the Wall of Honor was a project that we proposed to be funded by the quarter cent sales tax that voters approved last November. If approved, Vireo, which did our master plan, we've had great experience with, and they did a really good job for us, would design three draft designs for the Wall of Honor. We'd take those to the Veterans Committee. They would narrow that list to one, and then Vireo would make further refinements to that. So, the cost would be $15,000 for their work, plus if they send staff down here, it'd be $1,500 per person for their time and their travel expenses when they make site visits. So, with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
How many times do they plan a visit? How many people?
Mayor, I'm gonna guess it's probably gonna be two visits.
I mean, I'd bring a couple hundred people with me. I got $1,500 bucks a visit per person.
Normally, they only bring one or two people, and I expect probably two visits, one to get initial thoughts from the Veterans Committee, and then another visit to make some proposals and refinements and all that, to meet with the committee one more time.
I'd like to see a cap on it.
Pardon that?
I'd like to see a cap on it, like bring it back with a $20,000 amount, something like that. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I can certainly do it.
I mean, I don't like an open-ended contract.
We can do that, certainly. Sure.
What do you guys think? Do we have a tabling?
If you did two people, two visits, that'd be $6,000.
I'd be okay with that. So...
So, when we're tapping at that, for some reason, there needs to be more money.
They can bring it back.
Todd, does that work, does that work okay with you?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I think two visits would be, would be fine.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to approve this item with a $6,000 cap for the per-person site visit?
All right. Thank you.
Second.
All right. We have a motion.
Does that work?
That works great for me. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number five is consider approval of a modification to the existing ODOT project agreement for the installation of a sidewalk along the south side of Northwest 12th Street between Santa Fe and Grace Point Drive to change the federal cost share rate to an 80/20 match and approve the local match of $30,000.
Mayor and council, you may remember earlier this spring that an agreement was approved for a 100% federal funding for a sidewalk along Northwest 12th Street between Santa Fe and Grace Point Drive. It was on the south side. In the past, the federal regulations had allowed for ODOT to fund sidewalk projects at a rate of 100% federal funding, up to $200,000. This sidewalk project did fall within that parameter. However, before they bid it out, which it was due to be bid out this September, they did notice that the federal regulations had changed on that and that for now, the, any pedestrian improvements, which would include sidewalks, are funded at the normal rate of what federal funding generally applies, which is an 80/20 match, and there is no cap on how much we can spend. So, ODOT requested that we do bring this modification back to you guys. If you do feel so inclined to pay the match of $30,000, they can get it back on the bid list quickly so we can get the process started for construction. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Certainly apologize if this did happen, but $30,000 is a good value for half a mile of sidewalk.
We have the $30,000 for that?
Certainly, yes.
Move to approve.
All right. Thank you. Second. Thank you. Any other discussion on this? I think sidewalks are an excellent value.
This is a project that also ties the Grace Point Villas, or whatever that is called, over there, back towards Santa Fe and get them back to the grocery store, and also, this is a really good project. All of them are good, but this, I think, is...
Better.
Special.
Really good. Yeah, perfect. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please, if there's no other discussion?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number six, consider approval of an annual update to the city emergency
Mayor and council, good evening. Every year, we bring forth a review of the city's emergency operations plan. Normally, we do that sometime in the September timeframe, and what you have before you this evening is the, are those updates. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just briefly, Kayla, and just briefly.
The updates, most of them are relatively minor. They update some new programs that are out. One of them, we added a notation in the Health and Medical Annex that, where we have a statement that says that Moore Medical Center is our closest hospital. Obviously, that's not the case at the moment. So, we added a note that said that they will be back in temporary facilities come a month or two. Updated some of the maps, updated the city council information, since we have a new face and some new expiration dates on your terms. That's the gist of these, these updates.
My question, I approve.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number seven is the consent document. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held September 16, 2013. Item B is ratify action of the city council on acceptance of the annual actuarial report for fiscal year ended June 30, 2013. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2013-2014 in the amount of $1,112,728.91.
Make a motion to approve.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on these items? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number eight is consider authorizing staff to negotiate with the city's current agents for 2014 insurance policies for property and contents, excess public officials, and employment practices liability, and excess workers' compensation.
Mayor and trustees, we need to start working on our 2014 insurance renewals, and the staff recommends that MPWA trustees authorize the staff to negotiate with their current agents, receive quotes for the above-listed policies for 2014. This is something we do every year. So, anyway, we're just recommending approval on this item.
Okay. Thank you.
Move to approve.
All right. Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote if there's no other discussion on these items?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Good afternoon.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number nine is consider approval of Select Actuarial Services agreement to complete the next three actuarial studies at a cost of $8,500 each. Are these for three different years?
Yes. Mayor and trustees, we actually started working with Select Actuarial Services back in 2000, and at that time, of course, the first time you do any kind of study like this, it's a lot more work involved than the first one. The first one was, they completed the study for $9,500. The next seven studies, it's $7,500 each, and the last six studies, they've done for $8,500 each. The staff believes that they've done an outstanding job on every one of the studies, and the staff recommends that we continue to use Select Actuarial Services at a cost of $8,500 each for the next three years.
Is this something that we don't have to send up for bid, I guess?
You can, we can. We're not compelled to.
Okay. That's what I was asking. Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. At this time...
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make a comment here. Now that the vote's over with, I just wanted to remind you all and thank Select. If you call, they donated the fee that they charged us this year for the actuarial services to the foundation, Moore Public Schools Foundation, or Moore Public Schools.
To the Actuarial Foundation.
Which goes to...
For more schools.
For math things. That's all I can say. Anyway, they made a very generous donation of their fee amount for this year to this foundation to help the school district get back up and running with teachers and so forth for math-related items in their classrooms.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much.
Well, being a math teacher at Moore High School, thanks.
You may have a conflict, man.
Yeah.
Wait. You gave it to us, not the other way around. Yeah. The school, right. Excellent. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number 10 is the consent document. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held September 16, 2013. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2013-2014 in the amount of $191,722.95.
Move to approve.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on any of these items? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number 11 is new business. Item A is citizens' forum for items not on the agenda. Janie Mylan. Oh, John Evans is on there, too.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Janie Mylan, president of the...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Janie Mylan, President of the Old Town Association. I live at four-ten Garland. It is Sean Evans. He is our resident representative for the Old Town Association, and he lives at.
Three-one-three Northwest Second Street.
And we're here tonight just to share some information with you about Old Town and let you know that there are some very enthusiastic and energetic business owners in that area who have a vision of what they would like to see in the Old Town area, and they are working very hard to promote not only the Old Town area, but the economic development for the entire city. They have a real concern for the Old Town area and what it should look like, and that we're here tonight just to let you know that we have some very interested and enthusiastic people have a vision for that particular area. And then Sean would like to share some information as a resident.
Yeah. Not only are we excited about the business district, but I think this group has a lot of vision for just the entire district of Old Town. So, not only businesses at Main and Broadway, but also in the neighborhoods where people live. We just see a really great opportunity for this to just be a really walkable district, a walkable area. There's no other neighborhood in Moore that has what we have here in Old Town. So, you have families that can walk their kids to school, but also to the library, to the community center, to this new park that's coming, restaurants, boutiques, all kinds of great stuff. And so, we're just really, really excited about the potential. And so, as things are rebuilding and as things are going really well here in this town, we just want you guys to know that there's a group of citizens that are really passionate about looking back at the historic downtown.
And we know that the city has really made a commitment to the Old Town area with the Streetscape Project and also the new Public Safety Center. So, we know that you have a vested interest in that area as well. We're not just a committee that meets together to plan events, but we do want to share with you some of the recent and upcoming events. We just had Big Wheel Nationals on the twenty-first of September, and the Parks and Rec Department worked with us on that, and we had over a hundred and forty-one children who pre-registered, and I'm not certain how many actually registered that night. But it was a parking lot full of families having a good time with free food and lots of activities that evening, and the U.S. Army recruit received the Best of Show. You would not believe the big wheels and how they were transformed from just a three-wheel tribe to a helicopter, an airplane, and purse, and just all kinds of different big wheels. Tomorrow night, October the eighth, is Old Town Night Out. It's going to be held at First United Methodist Church from six to seven-thirty, and we would like for all of you to come. It's a night for our residents as well as our business owners to get together and just have a good time. So, we would like for you to come and to meet and greet those members of the Old Town Association and the residents as well. Then on October the twenty-sixth, it's a full day of activities, not just in Old Town, but in the city of Moore. We have the Moore Rotary Club Pancake Breakfast, and I'm sure there's a few Rotarians here that would have tickets available for you to purchase. We have the First United Methodist Church Fall Festival, the Red Ribbon Parade, Haunt Old Town from four to seven, and then the Trail of Fears at Little River Park. But Haunt Old Town is grown from a few merchants handing out candy for Halloween to having over four to five thousand people coming to the Old Town area. And we certainly appreciate all the city staff who participate in that. The police officers close the streets, and we have open areas for the people to walk freely among the Old Town area to do trick-or-treating. This year, we're going to have a lot of activities like extreme animals. We're going to have a DJ at Main and Broadway. We have snow cones. We have food trucks that are coming this year. It's something that we've not ever done before, so we're real excited about that. And then at the community center, there'll be activities. So, it's everywhere from the community center to City Hall. The next and other event that I would like to mention is December the sixth, and that's Christmas in Old Town. We start out with a community dinner at five o'clock at the First United Methodist Church. We have the Christmas tree lighting at six o'clock here at City Hall. And then the library has its holiday gala that night, as well as the Aging Services, Gingerbread House Contest, and silent auction. And I know you're all familiar with the Aging Services. They are the agency that provide the foods to the brand center and the home-delivered meals to our seniors. So, it's a fun-filled evening, lots of fun for families to come out and have a good time. We would like for you to put all of those events on your calendar and to come and participate in those. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's exciting. There's no one else signing up to speak. Would anyone like to speak? Item B is. Items from the city council or trustees.
Just have a quick comment. Something I've been thinking about, maybe the city of Moore, the council participating in. Oklahoma City have a youth council, and I've looked into it just a little bit, but before I go any further, invest any more time, I'd like to see if that's something that we may be interested in pursuing and that students throughout our community that are leaders, and there, you know, there's a process that they go through, have an opportunity to see our city government work pair up with the city council person, and just see some of the behind-the-scenes stuff, and give them opportunity to advance their leadership skills and growth. If that's something you think we may be interested in, I would go forward with it and ask a few more questions and bring back to you guys what I find. Just kind of getting the consensus. If y'all would like that, maybe, I don't know.
The chamber kind of has that leadership war thing. I don't know if they let students.
For adults, this is geared towards high school students from Maryland.
We had something like that once. We worked with the schools, and I can't remember what it was.
I think it has been some years ago, but we did have a youth council, and I think it worked out well. It's just wasn't continued for whatever reason, I don't know. But I think it would benefit the students and perhaps you all as well, but certainly, you have.
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
If you guys have any thoughts, just shoot me an email.
Okay. Any items from the city manager or trust manager?
Jim, you wanna?
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
That didn't scare you, was it? Let me guess, the money guy. It's bad news. He always has somebody else tell it.
The manager's passing out the monthly report.
Okay.
For August.
Thanks.
The MPWA is looking bad. Significant deficit there. It's due to the semi-annual debt service payment on the water treatment plant. It was a touch more than I anticipated, and we have another one that's due in February of that same amount. Also, our water purchase from City of Oklahoma City was kind of what it is during the summer, is very high. And I guess the major thing in that fund is we temporarily have lost twelve hundred homes that were generating revenue for us. They, the expenditures, many of them are fixed costs, so if we have twenty thousand accounts out there or eighteen thousand, those expenditures are the same. So, all of that combined, the fund doesn't look well. It will recover, but it may take several months as homes are built back and, you know, more revenues are generated. But there's, there's some decisions that need to be made on that fund, especially by budget time.
What's your recommendation?
Well, I hate to say it, but it may need a rate increase on the water side especially. And just get some more homes built back and get the revenues to increase.
Well, figure out what you need and come back next meeting and tell us.
Okay.
That's.
We may, we may need to take some temporary moves just in this fiscal year. You can see it on there also that the general fund, the city general fund side is doing extremely well. So, you may recall a year or two ago, Jim, the MPWA gave a loan or gave an advance over to the city side, and so, we may need to consider doing reverse at least part of that before the end of the fiscal year. But we will look at any kind of increases or anything like that, we would look at through the budget process and make sure there's a good discussion before we would present anything to you all there. But as bad as that number looks, it's not a crisis. We just want to make you aware of what that situation is. The MPWA fund will need some adjustment as time goes along.
And another option the manager and I talked about was maybe reducing the transfers out of the MPWA to the general fund and to risk management. And their cash flow in those two respective funds, it could be done on a short, very short-term basis, but that's another option to consider.
Do you think it, do you think it would limit or lower how much water we buy from Oklahoma City if we institute mandatory water rationing regardless of whether or not going to drought or not?
Well, actually, we've been under water rationing for quite a while, and our experience has been when it's mandatory, then people somehow use more.
Really?
They, even if it's on odd even, they're using considerably more during the, on their days. So.
Oklahoma City is on essentially a permanent odd even.
That's what I was thinking of, yes.
And it's, it seems simple. We just raise the rate and make it mandatory. We'll raise all kinds of.
I don't want to do that, but.
And we're under that. We've not aggressively enforced that. We could do that. We don't like to do that.
Sure, sure.
Whenever the summertime rolls around. That would help some, but we're still gonna have to be a revenue, look at the revenue side as well.
Right.
How many, how many homes have we gotten rebuilt, or any idea of the permit?
Well, I think there's two now that are occupied. But there's about, there's about two hundred and fifty, two hundred probably, and around in that, that are under construction in the storm area. And then another hundred probably in the storm areas, if not in the storm areas. I think the last number I saw that Kathy gave me was three hundred and fifty permits issued since the storm, in storm and out of storm areas. So, when all those get online and come online, that's a good thing.
Any idea, Jim, what that, what that magic number needs to be? How many homes do we need to have rebuilt to make this look a lot better?
Well, we really need all those homes back. Yeah, twelve hundred.
Hollow and plus more than that.
Right. Yeah.
We'll fix it, Jim.
We're trying.
That's your job. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to give you a couple of updates, the Broadway paving project, that contract under Silver Star Construction will start this week. They'll start on the north end of that from 12th Street up to Eighteenth Street. So, that project is going to start this week. The, we received the preliminary plans from our engineer on the rebuild of Telephone Road between North Fifth and South Fourth today. We received those plans today. So, review those and turn those around. So, hopefully, by perhaps early this next year, we'll be able to begin that project. Todd, we haven't really announced publicly, per se, other than the press releases on the Coca-Cola deal, right? Anyway, the Coca-Cola released, the press release, I guess that was last week or so, about the winning of America's Favorite Park, which was very exciting. They're gonna come out and have a big check presentation and so forth and so on. We're hopeful around Veterans Day, but hopefully, in Veterans Park, that'd be cool if we could do it that day. So, we're trying to work towards that. The bridge that's out over on Thirty-Fourth between Telephone and Santa Fe is construction, reconstruction of that is going very well. Kevin told me today that he hopes to have that back open to traffic by the end of the month. So, that's going to make a significant difference in that roadway over there. Then that widening of Thirty-Fourth and that mile will be one of our SDP projects over time, right? Hopefully. That's the plan, anyway. I think that's probably all for now.
What about the bridge on Bryant? What are we, what are we gonna do on that one?
It's done and done.
Is it, is it open? Did we put a concrete box in there, or?
We did put a concrete box, but we put all the asphalt down, built head walls, and a concrete structure over the box.
But it shouldn't wash out.
Shouldn't.
Shouldn't wash out again unless we have a big storm.
We don't ever get those.
No.
Okay. Nah, not here, anyway. Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Next item is adjourned.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote?
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. We're adjourned. Thank you for coming. Maybe it never got started.